We ought to have that, that ought to be adopted.
Sometimes our amendments are.
If you can find them.
Well, but I think one of the things when we're doing something like this, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, possibly, we need to make sure that those amendments are detailed enough so that ten years later, fifteen years later, we can go back and we can see what was told because, you know, times, times change, people on the support changes. It's difficult to go back ten years without something in mind.
When, uh, and then here again, this is just conversation about when the ordinance was written by, who the mayor told me the ordinance was written by. My question was, was Zomba given the information of how many lots have already been told you will have one? And are those excluded from the development charges from two thousand seven on, you know, to new lots being developed, you know, which didn't really get an answer for that, but that question should be asked and should be answered. Again, it's, uh, you're selling something that you already sold, traded, traded for.
But, uh, on this issue, Ron, can you do some research into amendments previous back in, I mean, we're talking back two thousand? Two thousand? Fifteen years. And then also see what you can find and then also provide, and lead up all through all of us, the ordinance that these were referred referencing two thousand seven had changed. So we have that to educate ourselves with.
And we'll get that together.
Any other discussion of this topic? Moving on to the next item, discussion of possibly recommending amendments to the sign ordinance to clarify the requirements for signs in a B two, B three, I one, and I two districts. Ron, please proceed with this.
In your meeting in August, I brought to you some information I had uncovered provisions within the sign ordinance that were conflicting. There was some language in the body of the text that disagreed with Appendix One. Generally, that disagreement was about the area of wall sign that was permitted because wall sign is defined, the area of a wall sign is defined as a multiplier times the length of frontage of the buildings. And also, there was some conflict in the language about the number of wall signs that was permitted. And Chad and I have worked on this. We looked at almost exclusively, I think exclusively, wall signs in, uh, B one, B two, B three, I'm sorry, not B one, B two, B three, and I one, I two. And we attempted to resolve those discrepancies. And in your previous meeting, it was indicated, and I don't recall now who indicated, perhaps it was Lynn, or perhaps it was you, Roy, that the table was intended, Appendix One was intended to be the correct values. What Chad and I came up with has been provided to you in Microsoft Word Track Change Format so you could see where we added language and where we deleted language, with the exception, I think, of the change in definitions for unit. We didn't get that in, there was a change. But the proposal that you have before you is to add a definition for unit. And unit is paraphrasing here, within a shopping center, either enclosed or unenclosed, it is the length of frontage for an individual store or unit of the development. And then in the body of the language for freestanding stores, for shopping centers, enclosed shopping centers, and for unenclosed shopping centers, we eliminated any language in the body of the ordinance that discussed the number of signs or the area of signs permitted and simply referred everything to Appendix One. Did I represent that properly? In doing that exercise, I noted a couple of other things, and these, because you had not asked for these, these were not put in there, but I throw them before you to think about. On the enclosed shopping center, which to my knowledge, we have no such thing in Greensburg at the moment, the body of the ordinance reads wall signs are permitted, I'm totally paraphrasing here, I'm doing this for memory, are permitted where frontage faces parking areas. While that's the normal case in any enclosed shopping center, it's conceivable that you could have a situation where a wall fronts on parking, but it could also front directly onto a street. So you could perhaps want to change that language to read parking areas and/or street frontage, if you want to include that. The other thing I noticed in looking at the ordinance in the I two section, the table has several cells with no data in it. And it appears that that is about speeds. To refresh your memory, on Appendix One, the number and size of signs is dependent upon the number of lanes of traffic and the speed limit of the adjoining street. And the column in, that I noted is one for speeds greater than fifty-five miles per hour. And my first thought was, well, there is no such thing in Greensburg. And then it occurred to me that we have some I two property along Michigan Avenue or Old Four Twenty-One, whatever we call it, clear out there, opposite Honda, that's between Michigan Avenue and Interstate Route Seventy-four, where the speeds do exceed fifty-five mile per hour. However, the, the few cells that were filled were exactly the same as the adjoining column, which is fifty to fifty-five miles per hour. So perhaps the way to clean this up is simply to go to that previous column and take out fifty to fifty-five and put in greater than fifty. And then the oddity of not having data in all those cells in that part of the table has been eliminated. The other possibility I'll throw out here, by state statute, State Road Three could have its speed limit increased to sixty. Four-lane divided roadways are permitted to be as high as sixty, and I suppose someday three could be raised, so there could be another situation where we could be facing speeds greater than fifty-five.
That would be up to the state.
That's up to the state, that's correct.
So if we could go greater than fifty, we're fine?
We've covered it. We've covered it in the I Districts. We do not address it in the B Districts. The B part of the table only goes to fifty-five. That was Chad's graceful.
I should have been in more of the draft, I said we did not.
Is it not the very first paragraph, Kevin? It wasn't in blue, that's the part I apologize for. I caught that at the eleventh hour.
I didn't put track change on that one because it was entirely a section, so all of it changed.
I was trying to, I, I was the, the good or bad part of trying to show you the exact changes so you can see what was being proposed. In whatever form you wanted to be in, yes.
Any questions from board members?
Missing numbers would not go along with recommendations.
Anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Please, Mr. Podia, in a hell of a hurry, because I want to go to bed. I did this what you said.
Sean Green, Greensburg, Indiana. I requested this information a week and a half ago, so I don't really understand. I understand the last two parts, but the first part, if you could update that again, because I didn't get any information.
The language in the ordinance, I don't remember which way this went. Some, in the body of the ordinance, it said you could have an unlimited number of wall signs. Do I have that part right? Somebody's looking at it.
It says no specific limit.
No specific limit. When you look at Appendix One, it limits you to two wall signs.
I thought it had, for certain industries, it had a limit on signs because we wanted to take, for example, Chevy dealership would have Chevy, GM, maybe G, you know, three or four different brands. So I think there were some areas that allowed most signs and others. You hear that, or we came to the conclusion back then, just to keep it more open, just worried about square feet. So you guys won't get hit with variances all the time for one brand on one bill.
I think our understanding was that the default was the appendix and what, and the appendix is what we agreed to, is that?
I think you're right, but I guess, it's the way I remember it.
So the language in the, in the body didn't match?
Yeah, and I, I like the other two items I heard.
Sure, and it could have been just a general oversight, but there are different areas where wall signs, five, there's five, I mean, as opposed to just two.
Okay, indeed.
It's a chart? Yes.
I think what we.
That sounds good.
We just were trying to get it so that it wasn't a gray area, and I think we thought that the chart would overrule the language. Somehow, somehow it didn't make the.
Sounds good, man.
Thank you.
So I think the motion you recommended, city council, they made changes.
As highlighted in.
As highlighted in your, by your own.
Which was a district?
Yes.
The end or street, that the, those shopping centers.
Well, and you said the highlight of changes, but we also have the new definition of unit that didn't get highlighted. I see we're including that in the motion.
Right, yeah, the new definition of unit, which is not I one. And just, and the, and the idea that the chart is what you refer, it's the default. If the language doesn't really match, it's the chart. Yeah, we're going to eliminate, make it fifty and over instead of fifty to fifty-five and then fifty-five and over, just make that one column over fifty.
Over fifty.
I have a question. You have a second?
I'll say it.
You have a second, John. Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Then I have a question for Ron. You will provide the city council a clean copy of what you're voting on, correct?
Yes.
Because I can't remember. Like a lot. Between Chad and Audible Draft. Okay. An order for councils, an amendment for councils, inspiration.
Item four, discussion of possibly recommending amendments to the subdivision control ordinance to modify or eliminate the requirement in the process of combining multiple lots into one lot requires a hearing before the planning commission with a request combining two lots as with any other subdivision.
In your previous meeting, previous meeting, there were some people before you that had bought two adjoining lots, wanted to create one lot. It was discovered at that time that our subdivision control ordinance defines combining lots as a subdivision. And for one of any other method, that subdivision per ordinance would require a primary plat and a secondary plat in order to affect the subdivision. You granted some relief to a couple of people in that meeting, but that didn't address the, the long-range nature of the situation. You have before you a proposed amendment to the subdivision control ordinance, and I credit Chad for drafting this and confess that this is a little bit of a Band-Aid, but it's one that will resolve this issue if you would like to go forward with it. What it does is create a category of subdivision that is entitled administrative subdivision, and that process is that someone that wants to put two or more lots together, no limit on the number of lots. There is a limit that they have to end up with one when they're done. If they want to do anything other than that, then it's a full subdivision and would come before you. But if they want to administratively combine two, three, four, five, ten lots into one, that can be done through my office. There are some requirements there for documentation that's required. There is a, a test of what they're asking to do, a test in the sense that it cannot harm the community, and I don't have that language immediately in front of me, I'm kind of shooting from the hip to the nut, I apologize for that. And then finally, if there is something about a requested subdivision that my office would not be comfortable with, I would simply send them on to you, and you can figure out the correct answer. I've paraphrased much of that, but the language is there. Chad, have I missed anything important?
The only thing that we ourselves didn't decide, we're going to throw to you guys as a body to figure out, is whether or not there should be a, be a debt for this service and then using our resources for allowing, go through the administrative, we had talked over nominal, but it is still a matter of resources. But I put a provision in there where it's possible, it's just as easy to build it or remember as it is taken out, and so I had no recommendation on that.
We all received this, I read this before the meeting, some rest of the day. I for one think that for administrative subdivisions should be some processing fee, but that processing fee is, I'm not sure how much it should be.
I will say that if it's twenty dollars or less, will eat up as much cost in processing that payment as the payment.
Well, it shouldn't be that, but if you look, the ordinance says it is now, if they have to process, they have to follow it out, get this done, it'd be in excess of.
It'd be five hundred and ten dollars now, for the two plats.
How about advocating that it should be five hundred dollars, I'm saying, current process, it'd be out five hundred, as you said, five hundred and ten dollars. Remember feedback as far as you guys' views on the processing fee? Shouldn't there be one?
Yeah, because you're using the, you're using our work providing service, so I don't feel bad in charging or something. I agree with Ron, if we do it too small, you spend more money, you know, doing it than you're going to create. So, I don't know, what do you all think? Is, is a couple, is two hundred bucks fair for that? I mean, it's savings of three hundred and ten dollars if you want to look at it. And that covers us, would that cover? I don't know, Ron, what's your feeling? Would that cover our?
There's not a great cost to us. Let me wander off slightly different place before I fully answer your question. As Chad and I were discussing this, we discussed, is there a need for a notification requirement to adjoining property owners? I came down on the side, and I think I can put words in Chad's mouth, that we're trying to simplify the process, and that notification requirement delays things and makes the process a little more involved and truly costs more money because legal ads in or certified mail costs money. If we don't include a notification requirement, the cost is fairly minimal. We don't have to send out certified mail, we don't have to purchase legal ads in the newspaper, we don't have to hold a planning commission meeting ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. So our two costs is always a hard thing to get a handle on. Two hundred dollars would more than cover our cost, I believe.
I don't know what's rested, if it feels that comfortable, or you want to make it less, I don't care, I mean, I just have up with that.
To refresh your memory, there's a hundred and fifty dollar fee for filing a variance or special exception request for the Board of zoning appeals, so that's the neighborhood that, and there we do have notification requirements.
I would make the motion if we come with a hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll say it.
So, wait, this, this gets, the Board of the Council makes a motion, we got a second, you can vote on that.
It's cleaner and safer just to go ahead and take a vote on that, but it doesn't.
I'm just going to vote on the motion made for the processing fee of one hundred and fifty made by Blake, second by Roy. Mike?
Are you going to have time for discussion?
I was looking back at that after.
Well, discussion on the fee motion, motion.
Okay. Any other discussion, board members on the fee? Anybody in the audience want to have a discussion on the fee?
Um, Speaker, step forward, Mr. Whitaker.
I don't think it's a fee necessary, but, again, in the covenants, that's right there on that one, and in Mill Ridge, it clearly states that two lots can be combined. That was approved also. So, what this is all about, I have no idea, because I've combined them before, I don't know if they've combined them in Mill Ridge, but I'm assuming they probably have in the past twenty years, and there was nothing done about, you know, there was no statement about it or anything else. But again, that is in the covenants that allows that to happen, that was approved by the planning commission, by the council, recorded as a court house.
Our subdivision control ordinance, as it now stands, does not prohibit, does not prohibit combining lots. It simply prescribes a procedure for doing it. What you're considering tonight is to change that procedure.
Any other comments from the audience? Having heard none, please. Blake?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right. Now. I make a motion to send this to the council. I have a motion to send the administrative subdivision to council as written, with the addition of the processing fee of one hundred and fifty dollars added to it. We'll have a second to that motion. I have a second with John. John, please call, take vote. Blake?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, discussion of possibly recommending amendments to chapters, chapter thirty-three point five four meetings for to modify or eliminate the requirement at the planning commission meeting in the months of January, April, July, and October.
Back in April, you all had a meeting that you didn't need to have, only because it was in the ordinance that you meet in the month of April, and what you did was to discuss, do you want to or need to amend the ordinance to not require a meeting, what is effectively the first month of each calendar quarter of the year? Chad and I talked about this, and I've been out of the office for a couple of days, and I am totally lost on where we ended up. Did we get some language together, Chad?
I did send you a draft, but you probably didn't see it.
I did not.
Because I didn't know you actually got to see it, and I knew you had to record on Friday, but I have drafted a proposal for you guys, apparently nobody's seen it yet.
This has to go to council for approval, so having said that, if we get a chance, we're going to have another meeting here, by the draft, review. I'll just take something that's going to council for approval.
It's two, two readings, I believe, Mayor?
Yes, but you can, if you so choose, council, you can do both readings. I did, but no, I answered her.
Right now, you're faced with meeting next month being October?
Is there a meeting scheduled?
Is there business? No, I don't think, having been out of the office for a couple of days, I don't think there's any business to appear before you next month.
But as the board orders, we have to meet anyway, because it's the first order, it's the first making of law, we can't change it now, so, I guess we do have one item on the agenda for next month.
To discuss the mending the ordinance.
Draft a meeting.
So we will develop some language for you to consider prior to that meeting.
Much. Item number six, report status of unsafe buildings, one outstanding at Hendrick Street and this street.
This has been a topic that's been of concern to the city in various forms. Those of you not familiar with the property, I'm told the property is set vacant for perhaps twenty years or close there to. The exterior finish on the building is really nonexistent, there's really no paint left on it, there are some hole, there is a hole in the roof, there are some areas of the fascia board and the soffit that are rotted and could permit ingress of rodents and vermin. The property owner has been formally contacted, and I provided, I believe, in your packets this month, a copy of the letter.
This was addressed to, was this delivered to the Rikers citizens?
They are the owner of record. That's the county. I understand that. That's the, that's the owner and address the county still sends tax bills to. We spoke with a Mr. Randy Herbert, who, as I understand, is a spouse of an heir, and apparently they are the ones that look after whatever's going on there. We had a telephone conversation, and Mr. Herbert reported that they are interested in cleaning up the property and either selling it or demolishing it, and their plan was to clean it up and then make that decision. We expressed a need to enter into the property and assess its structural condition, and he was to get back with me and make arrangements for doing so. And today or yesterday, I'm not sure which, Sarah told me that he had called wanting to make those arrangements, and I said he wasn't available to take that call. So the, the city's interest has not been lost nor forgotten. It seems to be moving forward, at what pace, I'm not sure, because I haven't had a chance to speak with him. As soon as we can, we will go inside and evaluate the structural condition. If it's structurally unsafe, then it needs to be demolished, if it's not, then the openings can be repaired, patched, whatever, so we can secure the building against rodents and vermin and so forth. Beyond that, we're pretty limited in what we can require.
Okay, what about the clean excrement that's been left in there because of rodents and vermin?
I'll have to reread our ordinance regarding that, but I believe that is the responsibility of the county health department.
And then send the people back to us, so maybe we need to keep peeing in this vicious circle.
Kind of a circle there, yes.
It needs to be taken care of and not just pushed off on somebody else.
Our ordinance, our ordinance specifically says that if it's a health issue, and I'm paraphrasing again, but if it's a health issue, then that is to be dealt with by the Decatur County Board of Health. That's the health department, I don't know. I can tell you about structural condition, I'm well qualified for that. I am not well qualified for health issues.
It sounds like we ought to get the county board of health, go, someone from there to go live you when you make your inspection.
We can invite them to participate.
If they refuse, I mean, I don't know what we do, but I think we should invite them. If they refuse, I mean, I don't know what we do, but I think we should invite them to participate.
You've been down this road, Mayor.
Can you tell you what the county health board told me when I called in to report some places in Greensburg? They said, well, that's in the city. I said, last time I checked, the city's in the county.
Okay.
If I may, ask one other question here. The city's has been vacated for several years. I'm assuming there's no utilities on there, those premises for that.
I checked with city utilities, and they have no record of water supply. I don't know about.
And the cleanup that's being done there is responsible by the person making the corrections or waiting patiently, just learning to turn away themselves. I'm okay with that, the city.
Under our, I've kept property ordinance, we can clean up a place and charge them for it, but that doesn't make them pay. And then our recourse is to lean the property. And then if, when the property ever changes hands, we maybe even recover, maybe even enforce that.
And he hasn't been contacted?
Yes, and Sarah told me he had called back yesterday or today after our convention. He always knows we're here to take that call.
Well, it's under the money, and they have some, must be addressing some hope and have some trouble closing up, or they're anxious to get in in the future.
We cannot force the place to be painted.
I guess we'll have our next one, do you have? I mean, inspecting, did I call back?
Hopefully, it's inspected by the training.
Any other comments on this? All right, moving on. Any other, any other items for the planning commission members? Have you heard that, or the motion for adjournment?